And I'm having them both in here together for a couple of reasons. One, our Conservation Commission Department, IT, and Wendy, Board of Health Director. They're in the first floor, the garden suite. I'm gonna call it suite.
Garden, garden.
Garden level.
Garden level.
Garden level. And they, there's a lot of synergy that gets created in that office. There's some shared resources and obviously space. And so it felt, it made sense to have them both here. And there's one item that they both, that resource that they use that I thought would be good for them both to be here to talk about. So with that being said, we go to page back to, we're on the Conservation Commission page right now. So on page five.
Oh, there it is.
So basically, again, a step increase for that, for the position. And then you see that in red that there's a step increase for the clerical support, but also fourteen eighty-eight requests for an increase for hours. And I'm gonna table that to go now to the Board of Health to walk through that budget. And then we'll go back to that additional because that's the shared resource I want to refer, I was referring to. So if you wanna go to page, unless there's any questions, this one's pretty simple. Budget, other than that increase. Page fifteen is the Board of Health. And so, again, step increase there. However, you'll see it reduction in that line item for the cost. Longevity, Wendy's predecessor was here for a number of years, had longevity. That longevity is no longer on their budget, or in the budget. And then the salary as well is reduced accordingly. So that's where those numbers come from. And then the administrative assistant, again, you see an increase there for step. And then also in addition to that, a four thousand dollar increase for additional support hours. And then I mentioned earlier when we were talking about TA's budget and trying to actually represent the minutes, minute takers and their time by a dollar amount, not just by comp time. And currently, the minute taker, the other department, the TA's office, other department that's leveraging comp time to, for their, for their minutes is the Board of Health, as I understand it. And so in here is a number that recognizes that outside of the comp time, the cost for a minute taker would be this much money based on the number of hours, et cetera. So that if, for some reason, that position transitions, someone else comes in and they're not taking on that responsibility, taking minutes, we can still have funding, dollars available to pay someone to do the minutes, which is trying to be consistent across all departments in how we do those minutes. Whether it's somebody who works for the town or somebody outside, making sure we can compensate them accordingly.
To challenge you a little bit is if it's inside, then it's in wages and salaries. If it's a consultant, so to speak, or contracted, then it's under other.
No.
Right? No?
They're all under, so there's, there's three minute takers that work within the town right now, and they're all under salary wages.
And they're all, they're all given a grade and a step and paid by the hour?
They're part of the classification schedule.
Not by the meeting or any of that nature. Has that always been the case, Donna?
Yeah, wages.
Okay.
Some of them don't, aren't benefit bearing though.
Right, they don't work enough hours to get benefits.
So for the town administrator, Deb, do you do some of the meetings and you have the minute taker help? Or are they going to be doing all of them with the setup that we have?
With the request of the increase, it would include the work sessions.
So are they doing the fall?
They were just strictly doing the board selectmen meetings on Mondays.
Okay, I'm just trying to compare what we have then for a total dollar amount in the town administrator minute taking versus what's being requested in the other departments, just to get a sense. So are you moving over all minute taking to the person here? So then our total amount would be twenty-one seventy-five plus the nine oh six?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about three thousand dollars for the town administrator and twenty-three hundred roughly? And that's a combination of Board of Health and Conservation?
They're two separate people, I love your looking at it.
I know, I'm just trying to think the amount of time. How many meetings do we have? How many meetings do they have? Just trying to compare the two amounts. We've got three thousand dollars, maybe twenty-three hundred.
I have one meeting a month, so twelve, potentially thirteen meetings a year. But it's, I've asked for two hours a week maximum for a minute taker. But the minute taker for the Board of Health is a separate line from the Conservation Commission.
Conservation minute taker's not in there.
Okay, so this is just?
Just Board of Health.
Board of Health, which is twenty-three hundred dollars for once a month? And where three thousand for four times a month?
Roughly, yeah. I mean, this, this month it's six meetings.
It just means a lot, the comparison.
So your time actually in the meetings is, is not, we're not, we wouldn't be paying her for those times in the meeting.
Wouldn't be paying who?
The person who's taking the minutes for the, in this case Debbie, when she comes to the board.
Strictly just doing like, I give her all my notes and recording and she does the minutes off of that. So she's not, you know.
So let me, let me try to.
Our minute taker is going to be present at the meetings as well as generating the minutes.
Exactly, so we, it, I feel strongly, and I think the board feels strongly based on what I've heard talking with Debbie on this, that it's important that Debbie be present at the meetings. And so she, it's, she has a recorder, obviously, and she's able to record the meetings. She can then take that recording, hand that off, and have somebody who professionally does minute, meeting minutes, take that recording, type up the minutes, and then post those minutes accordingly, which will.
And that's been working well.
Yeah, so to make it comparable, our line item would really be six thousand dollars for the time that they spend in the meeting with us and the time that they put the minutes together. That makes it more understandable with yours because we have about three times what you have on average. And you're about a third of what we would be doing.
That's right.
Okay.
And one thing I can say about having a minute taker, because at our meeting last night, our minutes are a hundred percent up to date, two thousand nineteen is done, posted. So having a minute taker makes, makes it, getting minutes up there extremely efficient.
And it's because your minute taker is a third party, correct?
Yes.
Somebody who comes in and takes the minutes and that's a profession. You know, a lot of times in the TA's office, and, and there's a lot of things that happen any, any given day. And so for whoever it might be, it's Debbie or somebody else who works for the town during those hours to try to put those minutes together, sometimes it can be a challenge, Donna, I'm sure you can speak to that as well.
Oh, very much.
And now it's probably exponential because I showed up and I'm running around like crazy. Trying to ask for meetings and everything else going on.
What would you say would have been the timeframe setting for the minutes to get out prior to having the minute taker?
Without a minute taker, oh, we'd be, we're six months behind, I think that would be good.
Okay, sounds much better to the taxpayers to be able to have up to date records quickly accessible on every day.
People ask about minutes.
So that, just going back to the Board of Health, that's the, that's what that line item represents, obviously. There's a couple of line items in the Board of Health as well on the, on the other category in the operating expenses. So bearing of dead animals. We've been, since I came in, it's, it's one of those items I was flagged with coming in. And it's something that a lot of communities struggle with. How do you handle when a deer is hit and disposal of that? Or smaller animals that might be in high profile locations by school or something like that? When they, or even a domestic animal for that matter. And so Wendy and I and Steve Shepherd have been spending some time, meeting, discussing what our options might be to address that issue in a consistent way. So we're not, every time there's a report of one, we're sort of, well, can this guy pick it up? Can that guy pick it up? Who's available right now? Should be in-house, should be out externally. What we've looked to do is limit some of our liabilities by looking for a third party. Historically, Steve Shepherd had been doing it for a number of years. There was some concern from his, his board, and rightfully so, about some of the issues that could come by dealing with a dead animal. There's certain training that you should be going through, equipment, et cetera. And so we wanted to, we tried to isolate it and pull it out. Well, my predecessor, Robin, pulled it out of the job description for Steve. And oversight of dead animal removal does fall to the Board of Health because of disease, et cetera. So we've been trying to come up with a solution. I had a, we had a good meeting earlier this week where we talked about the history behind it, disposal, and understanding what our options are going forward. And so what we've put in here, and it's been an ongoing conversation when the budget was due, is still evolving to some extent, what that operating plan would look like and what would be the best option for the town. But we have a couple of options that we laid out there. What is purchasing of a freezer for domestic specifically? So if someone's dog is hit, we have a place to store it. A lot of times, though, domestic animals recovered by the elders pretty quickly, as I understand it. So it's something that we wanted to consider, so we got some estimates for that. We also talked to a few people who historically have been willing to pick up animals, who more recently have, maybe for lack of a better term, retired from the, providing that service. To get an understanding if we were to identify someone else who could pick it up, a third party, external provider, what that cost might look like. So we, we had, it was close ballpark wise what that would look like. We then found another vendor who does, who doesn't necessarily do this work, but was willing to do this work. It's really hard to find people who do this work.
I'm sure.
And, go ahead Wendy, I can tell you.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying just because I believe this is somebody who's actually sort of known to the folks in residents of Topsfield. It's TW Excavating. We're kind enough to step up and offer to.
Who was it?
TW Excavating, Dana Warren and Jesse Warren.
Okay.
Were kind enough to step up and, and offer to this service to the town. So they will collect and compost.
Didn't we, didn't we used to put them in the town forest? Didn't we used to have a?
Yeah, so one of the things that actually came across my desk.
Children?
Boy, one of the things that actually came across my desk the first week I was here is that they're running out of room, so.
Too many dead animals in the forest?
Yes.
Which forest?
Town forest.
Very, very.
The pond.
It's just out of the pond itself, right? But it has a color, it has color on it.
Does it take in ground?
And things like that. So the question, the terminology, run out of room in, what does that mean? In that particular year? But not if you started and all over, but then you have to quiz it and a bunch of things, go ahead.
So, so the answer to that question is they have run out of room that they can use without potentially impacting whether it's conservation lands or something. There would have to be a lot of more research and, and potentially purchasing of land to find something that is reasonable for us to use as a disposal site. And there's nothing readily available, is what I'm trying to say.
So there's a, a real cost associated with what, to do it, do it consistently in, in a formal sense. Struggled with this in Beverly, to be honest with you, and we had a line item for this type of, and it, it's, it's sometimes rare to find someone who's willing to take that responsibility on.
I'm sure.
It's, it's not pleasant work, as you can imagine, but we feel confident that adding some, some funds to that category will allow, will allow us going forward to be able to have a consistent process associated with it.
How often does this happen?
So, it does vary year to year. I have an average of, Steve Shepherd provided an average of fifteen deer a year.
Right.
It has gone up to as many as thirty-five deer. Smaller animals, you're saying about twenty-seven, between twenty-five and thirty of the smaller animals. So we're talking raccoons, turkeys, woodchucks. You know, we're not talking rabbits and birds and things, squirrels. That's, that's not compost.
Usually when night falls, the, the animals are not there by morning. So we, we wouldn't necessarily expend for a squirrel.
Right.
The cost to have somebody deploy and remove. But if, again, if it's in a high profile location, a heavily trafficked road or by school or downtown, we can make that call to bring in and have some support efforts on that. And that's a common sort of, again, in my experience, that's how, the city, city of Beverly specifically, we've, we've certainly dealt with it.
Is this on a, I'm trying to say, do this without laughing. Is this on a per animal basis? Or is this kind of a set fee that they agree to pick up all dead animals?
Per animal.
It's per animal.
So that's why we wanna be judicious on what type of animals we're calling for. If we have a deer, a buck, you know, that's gonna, it's on the yellow line. So we're gonna call pretty quickly to have that removed.
So if it's close to the line, we push it over and.
It works the other way too.
You're hung up on the town, the town forest thing, aren't you?
Wendy, what if it's not dead?
You didn't even know we had a town forest.
Police get involved when an animal is still alive and potentially impacting motors. But it is only public property, it's not private property.
Yeah.
Right, right, that's a good distinction, so you know.
Isn't that someone actually that homeowners can call if something happens, are they willing to?
No, they cannot.
I mean, would they be willing to react to it?
Currently, our, the town, the people who are employed by the town do not have liability coverage on private property. So we, they have not traditionally gone.
Isn't this a third party that we're talking about, the excavating?
This person will be a third party, but I would hesitate to open that up because, you know, somebody has a uncomfortable smell in the forest and they're gonna ask them to get rid of it, and that's a cost to the town when, you know, things that die in the forest should probably just stay there. Sorry, it happens to be the person who owns the forest who owns it.
I asked just in case someone was wondering, I see this on our residence page often. Who do I call if this happens?
What you're wondering is, could you refer to this person as, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Could they place a call?
Could you refer, but I think the appropriate answer is probably look up your local wildlife.
Yes, there, there are companies that, yeah, will remove some smaller animals, you know, animals that are in your house, animals that are in your yard, and, you know, there's appropriate measures to be taken. And, you know, there, there are companies that do this for a living. This was kind of to address a town need. And we were really kind of looking at the bigger animals when the conversation was started. What do you do with the deer that are hit?
How did, how did you find Dana Warren? How did he find you?
Jesse and I, I was wishing him happy holidays and I asked if he had an employee who needed some extra money. And he had a truck and a rope. That's kind of how it came up.
A truck and a rope?
Yes, yes.
After hitting many, many, many dead ends trying to resolve this.
I've been working on this for about six months to come up with something.
So Wendy's worked very hard on this. And this is an opportunity to reduce the city's, the town's liabilities because like I said before, we were handling dead animals in-house. And I think it's a, it's a good thing for everybody to be able to formalize it just to prevent something down the road that can be exponentially worse if somebody handled something they shouldn't be handling.
And you compost them, so.
They, they call Steve Shepherd.
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna get them, if somebody hit them, they get them out of the way. Steve, we've got something, I'll pick up Monday.
Yep, gotcha. And so flu vaccines, the vaccine expense, which is the flu vaccine. We also, it currently has not had any funding associated with it. But there is a real cost associated with providing it. Wendy and I spent some time looking at the actual costs versus the, what we're able to submit for, I want to be careful, reimbursement?
No, to recoup.
Recoup, recoup those funds associated with the flu vaccine. So there's two, two things. Each year we do not, we do not make money, we lose money on this. Not much money, we're talking hundreds of dollars, not thousands of dollars. But the reason for that is that the way we recoup our funds, we go through the state, and we provide documentation to them, and then they take out a percentage of what the, the fees associated, the medical reimbursements, the insurance companies provide for their service, and then we get the rest back to us. In addition to that, there are some people who are not insured, which in that case, we're not, we're not made whole through that process, or they're underinsured as well, and they don't have full insurance to cover the flu vaccine. And so we've also seen an increase in the cost to provide this. We're estimating around a three percent increase year over year when it comes to providing the flu vaccine, the cost of the product. And we're also, in addition to that, we've seen an increase in participation as well. And that's a good thing. I mean, it's, it's health, it's a good thing that people are participating, seniors, children, and everyone in between, to make sure we have a healthy community. And so we, I think last year's actuals, I had them down earlier.
I do actually have the actual numbers as far as money. So in FY eighteen, the Board of Health spent one thousand one hundred dollars and thirty-eight cents. And the town recouped five hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. In FY nineteen, the Board of Health spent one thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars, sixty-one cents. And we were able to, the town was able to recoup that year one thousand four hundred six dollars and seventeen cents.
That's a big year.
Paperwork. In FY twenty, we have spent so far three thousand six hundred and five dollars and eighty-three cents on vaccine. The, the big jump was likely due to an increase in the vaccine cost, but better advertising and a more centralized location for people to access. We held two clinics, we were able to vaccinate a hundred and thirty-five people. And we did have the high dose vaccine available for our senior population, and that was very important for them. We've, previous years, we've had to turn them away because we didn't have the high dose. And we will look for the reimbursement sometime this year in June or July. And we'll know then, the.
The split list.
The, yeah, the Commonwealth Medicine does the, the group, does billing for the vaccine, flu vaccine roster billing program, and they take ten percent. And we get what's left there.
So those expenses, Wendy, is that just the pure cost of the flu vaccine? Or does it include all the time that your department spends? It doesn't include your department's time?
No, no, doesn't include our department's time, doesn't include the visiting nurse that attends, doesn't include any, any of that time spent producing the paperwork to send for billing. It is just the vaccine.
Okay, so this request for thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Will be to cover the three thousand six hundred and five dollars we spent this year.
We don't think we'll recoup like we did last year?
We may, but it goes into the general fund. Currently, this fee has been paid out of, I mean, our Board of Health budget.
And there hasn't been a line item, so.
No, there is no line item, we're creating.
What it has been is that they've sort of, when it wasn't as actively used, being spread around different, different line items within the budget.
And they've picked it out of other, other line.
Picked it out of the dead animal.
Within the department.
Within the department, yeah. Well, because, yes, we, within the department.
Live humans, dead animals, that's okay.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So if we, we recoup regardless of what line item it was sitting in and who paid, if we get that money back again, then the thirty-seven hundred dollars is just extra that goes into the general fund?
No, the thirty-seven hundred dollars is what comes out of the Board of Health budget to pay for the vaccine.
We paid for the vaccine.
There will be a sum minus ten percent that the state will give back for us giving those vaccines, and that will go back into the general fund. I don't know the numbers, but in previous years.
About two thirds.
Spent fifteen hundred, got back fourteen hundred, spent eleven hundred, got back five hundred and sixty-three.
It shows up as a, as a local receipt.
So you've never had this line item in your budget before. Who's been paying for it? Where's the money coming out?
We've been paying for it, it's been coming from our budget, it's just not as separate.
She's asking to have a new line item set up so that she can track the cost more specific.
Yeah, really, right, so we, you know.
So that next year I'll be able to say, this is how much we spent, this is how much we got back, and you'd be able to see it, line item by line item.
Rather than taking part of it and putting it to other or to, to office supplies or.
Bring it out into the light.
This is the number, this is what we're paying for.
Viewed as a, as a service to the residents.
So is it state mandated, or is this something over and above that we do?
What a good way to ask that.
We don't have to do it, do we?
We don't have to, we will not get penalized for not. It is something that I believe every town in the Commonwealth provides for their residents to some degree or another. They, they, I mean, you, you can get it, whether it's a regional health group providing it to a region, or whether it's individual town, city, providing flu clinics.
And some of the, like, I know some cities around this, like Beverly, have multiple opportunities for people to participate. So they mobilize more than one time, which is an additional cost, but it allows people who might have missed the first one to participate in the next one.
Wendy, who pays?
Who pays the VNA? Do we, do they individually by the hour when they do a clinic?
Nope, the VNA is a contract.
It's a contract, right?
Yeah.
So if we didn't do the, we wouldn't save any money if we did not do the vaccination with the V, we wouldn't save money with the VNA if we didn't do the vaccinations.
Correct, the contract with the VNA would not change.
It's part of the overall contract we have.
Yeah, but it doesn't include Wendy's staff's time.
Time, right.
It does not.
It was built into your schedules, though, isn't it?
Yes, we expect to have a flu clinic as part of our usual business. And, and we have historically, I mean, I only have the last two years' worth of numbers, but we've done it. I don't know, I've been in the business for twenty years and I've never not done one, so.
Do we service a lot of people who don't have the money to pay for this? Because we're reimbursed through insurance, the same way if they went to CVS, they would be reimbursed through insurance.
Yes, so we, so the state of Massachusetts does not allow you to refuse anybody a vaccination. The state steps in and pays for that. So there is no insurance program to bill. So potentially, you know, so the state might absorb some of the vaccine costs, but they, that's not reflected in these numbers. These are what we can, what, what the VNA bills us for.
Right, I was just trying to look at, what if we didn't offer this? And everybody went to CVS? How many people wouldn't have the insurance to go to CVS where, you know, how many people do we give this to gratis? Or does everyone pretty much show up with their insurance card?
So we actually don't have that number, and I would hesitate because of, I'm not sure HIPAA laws if that applies to actually peeling out numbers of people who are.
You don't peel out numbers, but people provide their insurance as a time they get their shot.
There is a group of people who have come through our flu clinic this year who did not have insurance or who are underinsured. It, it wasn't a large number, we're a very affluent community, very fortunate, most of us have great insurance, it's Massachusetts. But, you know, there are those people.
So it strikes me as a legitimate cost that we should be doing for the residents.
Seniors do appreciate having it. I know that we've had quite a few seniors come through and be grateful, because we held it upstairs.
It's convenient.
It's convenient and comfortable, and they know the, the NA nurse.
So I know there's some evening commitments for the team, so I wanted to make sure we covered the other item if we, right now. So there's a request in both the Board of Health and the ComCom's budgets for additional funds associated with additional hours for the administrative support. The team shares a single individual as the administrative assistant in the office. What happened, as I understand it, a couple of years ago, and I'll let you guys fill in the blanks if I'm missing it, but the position was consolidated from two positions to one. That person had sort of capped on how many hours they were gonna work. And so the positions, which historically had represented X amount of hours for one department and X amount for the other, the consolidation, there was a two, two hours and one hour loss for each of the departments respectively. Two for Board of Health, one for the ComCom. So that administrative support was reduced, not by an operational decision, but more of a personnel decision in how many hours were, they were able to work. Since then, there's been transition in that position, and there's somebody there who's, who's been, but I can tell they've done a great job. And the team's here to advocate for going back to the hours that were allocated just a couple of years ago in their, each of the departments. Not to add more than what was before, but to get back to the level they were at. So I'll let you guys.
Yeah, so, I mean, like, like Evan said, when the position was, it was, those two part-time positions are consolidated into one, which for multitude reasons, which has worked out extraordinarily well. I mean, it provides better coverage, more consistency. The, the knowledge and the, the customer service is definitely a huge benefit. And, and it has worked exactly as we had hoped. But at that time, it was consolidated down to those hours because of the person that was there. Conservation, we had eighteen hours, we were down to seventeen. And Board of Health had nineteen, went down to seventeen just because of the thirty-four that the person was able to work due to their own.
That's where the number comes from, is thirty-four hours.
The, the number came from there, just based on, yeah, and then just got split, so, you know, it was kind of a.
So could you just talk about the operational need within the department? So could you just talk about the operational need within the department?
So, so as far as the needs go, when the position was consolidated, there was additional work actually given to it, and hours reduced. So there's trash composting. And that's a constant influx of people that come in for service. The other thing is that we're all consolidated down there, and you've seen, you know, we're, we are, we're kind of one department, you know, in the eyes of the public. So having coverage is extremely important, somebody always needs to be there. And when somebody comes in with a question, we have to, you know, they get answered, they don't, you know, it's not the, the old way of that department's close. So we have an enormous workload down there, and putting the hours back to what it was would be, it's, it's, it's absolutely necessary.
Let's put it to mention the trash, additional responsibilities handling, the, the customer service element of the trash, if there's some mist trash picked up or something like that, questions about new person to the town comes down, they, they'll, they'll talk with Sue, and they'll, they'll, Sue will explain what, how often the recycling gets picked up, or if the trash gets picked up. Trash is a really important item in town, cities, I have, I know some experience, so... You know, having that customer service and that ability to have somebody who can be the responsible person on this has been helpful, I'm sure, for the town at Tops School. But also, like they mentioned, something that was added on to the job description around the time of the consolidation as well.
I think it got brought down with the current person currently in the position. It wasn't there when the position was pulled together and the decision to drop the hours was there.
Yeah, yes, yeah, correct, it was brought down.
It was actually brought down when the person, the person who's filling it now brought that with her from a different department.
Could I ask for kind of a one-minute history of what's happened with trash? Who would take, who used to take care of it? What changed and where is it now, so to speak?
Would you like me to address that?
One minute, one minute.
Um, it was in the Board of Selectmen's office to answer any questions and pass out decals that go on the barrels, that is, the decals, and to sell the stickers to the retail organizations that sell it to the residents.
For, for bags, the, the two-fifty-dollar stickers.
The two-dollar stickers, I don't know, three. Um, and the compost, when it was instilled, then they wanted to, the TPW, um, Highways Group wanted to make, have them pay for it. It was brought into the Board of Selectmen's office because we're centrally located and we get everything there, and we are open more, more centrally located, so that was brought into the Board of Selectmen's office as well as the Executive Secretary had it. It became that, I, I don't know how it got to Sue, because I think it was getting too many people in the Board of Selectmen's office and getting too crazy. And then it was easier to pass along with Sue, who was in that position for a period of time, she knew how to do it, and they were trying to give her more responsibility when she went and to the Board of Health and Conservation to get her salary a little up too. So it was adding to her job description, is my understanding. So that's how it got to Sue and got away from the Board of Selectmen Executive Assistant. Is that two minutes? Was that enough?
What about the timing that this happened? When did it happen?
Three years ago, three years ago.
In the, in the Old Town Hall, in the, in the interim town hall?
Three years, three years ago.
Two years ago, we were in the...
Because when she switched, when she went back to the Board of Health, when she went back to the Board of Health...
Two years ago to the Board of Health.
I got you an idea, you know, I don't need to deep dive, just trying to figure out.
There was a, was there like a two-month delay before I came?
How many hours would you estimate she spends on trash, one way or the other? This is a trash recycle bin, and the compost.
Yeah, you probably have a pretty good idea, but of course it ebbs and flows because of compost and winter trash things are much more tricky.
She probably takes five to seven calls every single day about trash.
Well, we don't collect every day.
I understand you don't collect, but people call, they ask for stickers, they come in, they're new residents, they need a ten-minute explanation and...
So an hour a day, an hour a week.
For their barrel with a...
Got it, thank you.
It's just a nuisance.
It's a nuisance.
It's much more than an hour a week, I would say, I mean, it is.
And so you're asking to go from thirty-four back up to thirty-seven?
So I'm asking for, yeah, for Conservation to have the one hour back to eighteen and Board of Health back to nineteen.
So three more hours back up to thirty-seven, okay.
And we're going to put the, the category of trash and recycling under the authority of the responsibility of the Board of Health, so to speak? Does that, maybe it makes sense, I just want to ask the...
Yes, the interim town administrator actually approved a job description for the Board of Health Secretary with that in it.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I appreciate you guys taking us.
Appreciate your time for considering this, it's important stuff, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation on the animal.
So if we skip back to page four, we can start on the Town Hall operating level. And how are we doing on time sheet, kind of, by sure? Are you okay if we...
Yeah, I, I can go a little after five-thirty, but can we, what, another twenty, twenty-five minutes, do it?
After this line item, the rest of these items are basically one, one line items.
Pretty fast, pretty fast item.
With no increases. But this is one we might want to dig in on a couple of places, just for clarity's sake. So there's a few unknowns within Town Hall, specifically with this building, because as I understand it, it's been less than a year, so we don't have actual numbers to associate with some of the utility costs of the building. That being said, we do have some actuals to date, and looking at how we operate, we combine electricity and gas, the two main utilities that we use. We've actually, we've increased the electricity by two thousand dollars, and we've decreased the gas by four thousand, two hundred and ten, a net reduction of twenty-two, ten on those costs, which is a good thing. What we've done as well, on the, the water, the repairs and maintenance, we just rounded those out as well. The repairs and maintenance is a large number, so we've put ninety-one dollars into it, it's a fraction, percent in that, and the water to twen, to twenty-nine, twenty-nine dollars more. And then looking at the MUNIS software, there's an increase of fourteen, sixty-one. That is, MUNIS software again is, is our financial software. Contractual costs increased now, goes to Tyler Technologies, who provides that software to us. The next line item is facility management. And I've been brought up to speed by a few people on sort of the history behind that number, the twenty-five thousand dollars that was allocated and appropriated last year towards that facility management. That line item represents a facility manager ultimately. But it, there's two layers to the operations around the facility management. There's one, the investment in the facility dude, which I mentioned earlier, and then there's the facility manager. Facility dude was purchased with the intent to allow for all of the departments to have a streamlined process to report when there's a broken window, a leaky pipe, the lights flickering, whatever it might be. Facility dude is meant to be the tool that people can report in any of those work orders that might happen, but also track preventative maintenance and capital items as well, in a centralized location electronically. Facility dude in and of itself is great, but you need somebody at the backend to take those work orders and then either provide the preventative maintenance or repair that issue, or turn off somebody who couldn't do that and provide that service. So what we did last year, we gave twenty-five thousand dollars, as I understand it, earmarked for the facility manager. Last year, a lot of that facility manager's time was building out the facility dude product, customizing it for the town, and including all of the auxiliary buildings as well, police, fire, library, highway, et cetera, et cetera. And building out the capital needs, that was part of that facility dude implementation, is identifying capital needs, he worked on that. Also working on building the system and creating the, the lines of communication when a work order comes in and where it goes from there. So with all that being said, his time though was really dedicated to facility management at Town Hall. Actual nuts and bolts of healthcare rooms, police station, fire station, et cetera, would all call their own independent person to come in. Now firefighters and police officers and librarians are not necessarily skilled in facility management, identifying what type of preventative management might be needed for the building, or even how to handle something that might be a small or large issue that arises in an efficient way. And then once that issue is reported to their plumber or their electrician, so we had independent people operating each of the buildings, they then need to be responsible for that oversight of that without a facility manager like that. Facility managers has expertise in it. So the system that was, I'm inheriting, and the plan that I'm inheriting, I'm in agreement with, that centralizing facilities services to a single point or a team of people, whatever that might look like, a person with vendors who can help support it. Having an electronic service that provides individual departments to report in issues into the system so it's tracked and monitored and how quickly, and also the preventative maintenance, which I can undersell, is really going to create efficiencies within the departments, but also create a process that allows our assets to be looked after and hopefully extend the lives of those, saving the town money over time as well. In this instance, there's a request for ten thousand additional dollars. When we met with the current facility manager, when we went over the built-out facility dude product, the question I posed to him was how many hours a week do you anticipate taking on? Not just working at Town Hall, but responding to work orders and preventative maintenance and capital requests from all the other buildings as well. Of course, the, the number was twelve hours a week. Doing the math, that comes up to about forty-seven thousand dollars annually. We have twenty-five thousand dollars in this budget from last year that's there. So we put in ten thousand dollars, being a little, trying to be judicious with not saying, oh, that, that vendor said twelve, that's what we need. We'll work within the means we're provided with, but there's a real opportunity, I think, with the expansion of this. The ten thousand dollars, if you look at the amount of time it takes our other departments to, to manage these types of processes and work with the vendors, in addition to that, the preventative maintenance, which I mentioned, I think that number will pay itself back.
I, a, a statement and a question.
Sure.
I was involved in making a presentation to the FinCom about the fact that we didn't have anybody to take care of this building. And we had just come online with a ten million dollar building, and we didn't have anybody that knew what was going on, and, and it was on Donna's back to take care of that stuff. As a result of that kind, or those conversations, they put that twenty-five thousand in there. And that was, at that time, we didn't even, we weren't even talking about facilities. We were talking about helping run this building.
Sure.
Since that time, facility dude has come on the, the market, we've gotten involved in it, and now that job is expanding to include other facilities around town, okay? Ten thousand dollars doesn't seem like much to me at this point in time, because we still need that service. And that's my statement. My question is, I don't know much about this facility dude, I keep hearing about it, but it sounds complicated to me. Can we make it work with all the other departments in town?
I believe we can, I think it's, I almost want to just draw on that whiteboard to kind of explain it, but I think it's, look, am I...
Nope.
You got ten minutes.
No dog and pony joke tonight.
Who's the dog and pony?
I think we're going to give you them one, I mean, we're going to roll it out to the other departments.
There'll be training associated with it. I think that my take on it, and we haven't had a chance, because we're still fine-tuning and developing the product and making sure we have all, we've sorted through all the potential issues and the, and the operating systems and order of operations that were consistent when we rolled it out to the departments and do the training. But my, like I said earlier, you know, police, fire, library, they've been saddled with taking on this, this burden that they're not experts on. I think if we're able to take some of that burden off their shoulders and put it into the, for them, it shouldn't be as simple as just going, logging into the system, entering the request, hitting submit. And then the technical side will flow through the facilities manager, in this case Paul, who's built it, he knows it's an ounce of it, but also Donna and I will have an expertise in it at a certain level. Donna probably at this point more than I do, but we'll have certain levels of understanding where we can work with the facility manager to make sure that he's doing right by what the program should.
Has any of this been ruled out to the departments yet?
No, we're trying to, oh, I don't need to interrupt. We're going to have vendors, there'll be one electrician for the town, one plumber for the town, so that if something goes wrong at each one, they're all just using their best buddy. So we're going to bring it all in-house, and we are going to roll it out, if not before fiscal twenty-one, at the end of fiscal twenty, so that each person, each, like, it'll be, each building will have an identified person that it'll be centrally located at each building. Still here will be me, and I will put in a work order that the toilets are overflowing. And I'll go turn the water off, mine, you don't think I'll wait, but, you know, to fix it or something, it would be a work order. And then they can track if that toilet is continually having problems, doesn't need to be replaced. So it's, it's a multi-purpose type of system, and it's very intuitive, and it's a big asset to all the buildings.
We're tracking currently for six months' worth of actuals, sixteen thousand two hundred.
Yeah, we have to cut his hours back to make the what was allowable to the budget right now for the end, so that...
For the twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so that he can stay.
Thirty-five, if you, if you could see that, about thirty-two, thirty-three, adding the additional responsibilities of different buildings as well, you know, thirty-five seemed like a, the right number to start with.
Uh, one of the benefits of this that we've talked about is utilizing specific people who we're contracting with, so, you know, one plumber takes care of everything, one, you know, electrician, et cetera. That should reduce the cost with some economies of scale. Is that reflected anywhere in the upcoming budget that we should see better pricing?
Not this cycle, I don't believe.
And are the budgets still in each individual department for repairs? Because I know everybody has a bucket of money.
Yes.
Same with, with, I mentioned the, the printer equipment, et cetera. If it, if it's something that's within your building, your walls or any of your grounds, we're, we're keeping that number in there so we can track the actual costs, how much maintenance and repair of the police station, the fire station, the library, so that data will be helpful in the future. Not, not immediately, but the future as we look to, you know, there's a desire to do something different with those facilities that, you know, five, ten, fifteen years down the road, build a new fire station, okay, you know, we're tracking the maintenance and it's, and the cost of the budget's going out of control.
So you can see which building is having a problem?
Exactly, it allows us to be a little more granular with what, what the problems are.
So while we're not changing those budgets this year, we do anticipate that we'll see lower costs the following year, and we'd be able to look what the actuals are and adjust them if we are seeing savings?
We hope for the economies of scale, what we'll do is go to an RFP and ask for a service provider to give us a, a bid process.
Because someone may be getting a hundred an hour, someone else may be getting sixty-five, you don't know who they're calling.
Right, exactly, exactly. And so once we understand sort of, I mean, the maintenance is going to be maintenance, the, on average, right, law of averages, if you have X amount of leaky pipes in a given year, this isn't going to change that, it's just how we address it and, and by saving some funding, hopefully a lot of...
Yeah, in that better pricing by finding the one person who's giving you a little better price because they've got many more hours because they're servicing the whole town.
We can't, we can't do...
Is it, is it too much to, to, too much of a stretch to think that we could save some money on our capital budget because of facility dude?
If we're, if we're, if we're...
Preventive maintenance.
Preventive maintenance is really important, if we're changing out filters and doing the upkeep that's necessary for HBAC equipment or something else, something that has a twenty-five-year life might be thirty-five.
Down the road, we might be able to see some, I mean, again, pretty nebulous to try to put a finger on, I suppose.
It's, yeah, it's hard, it's, we know, we know...
Certainly premature.
There's plenty of, you know, anyone, you know, property managers, facility managers, you know, preventative, preventative maintenance is absolute part of what's done across the board for buildings professionally.
So this thirty-five is largely people time?
This is the people time, correct.
So in a sense, we, we said that we're going to save the fire department or the police department not having to go down there and figure out how to fix something, we're going to pass it over to somebody who's paying, being paid thirty-five thousand dollars or people being paid that much. What happens to the efforts that we remove, so to speak, from the police department? Are they, are they really, are they really spending that much time of their time trying to maintain their buildings? Or is it, are we just kind of fooling ourselves about it? On the other hand, maybe we're just saying we'll be doing a better job, meaning that we'll somehow save some money. But it's, it's very possible that we can spend this additional dollar, maybe make somebody's life better, maybe they won't have talk time. But, but we want to understand, if, if, if we're going to spend this money, how, so to speak, transfer the savings somehow back to the budget to save some money in the budget or something like that? You, you were talking about it from the point of view of dollars of...
For the contractor.
For the contractor, yeah, and the contractor has to buy the fittings and the whatever, whatever. But, but it goes even beyond that, I, I limit it as a rhetorical question.
But it also...
Just thirty-five thousand's a lot of money.
It also enables somebody that has a, at least some knowledge of, some of the capital projects are like plumbing projects and phases, the police station, somebody... Somebody as a facility person who knows how to talk to a plumber and can be on-site, and they would be overseeing that project to make sure that the project is being done in the best way. Whereas not to put Catherine on this, Catherine Jackson on the spot, she really wouldn't know if they were doing it wrong or incorrectly, so in a sense, it might not appear that, you know, apples to apples on salaries or whatever, but it's the oversight and the knowledge that somebody that knows what's going on is looking after it and not somebody that doesn't.
And the preventive, they can't undersell the preventive maintenance.
The police chief said to me one day, what if I talk to the plumber?
So they oversee, oversee.
I don't know anything about plumbing, and I said, what am I involved in this one? And I said, because we don't have anybody else to do it.
Right.
So that was, that's that line item there. The next one is office supplies. There's a request for an increase based on the actuals that we've seen in that line item. I don't know, Debbie, did you want to make any comments on that, or is it self-explanatory?
I don't, first of all, I don't understand, it says requesting additional thirteen-seventy-one. I thought the increase was only one-twenty-nine.
Move something, move distinct funds in there?
So some, we...
So it's still level funded?
Right, so the total.
The bottom line? The FinCom allows that?
Oh, okay.
So that's part of what was presented.
Okay.
So it looks here like to date, we've got fifteen hundred, but we still have another half a year to go. So you're projecting it's gonna be around three thousand, which is why you want to bring it up?
Twenty-six fifty-five.
What line item you look?
Office supplies.
Office supplies.
Yeah, okay.
And then the last request on this is the postage meter, I'm sorry, there's two last ones. Postage meter request for five hundred, that is based on, actually increases in postage as the amount of usage, correct, Debbie?
The supplies.
That's a supply line.
That's the five hundred, that's the meter supply. And the last item on this budget, so when the building opened up, there was a copy printer machine that was, that was purchased, or leased, leased.
There's one copy or a peer that is purchased.
The one up here is purchased on the garden level, garden suite.
Garden suite.
Negative one floor.
I like garden suite.
Jazz it up a little. That, that office has eight employees down there, that includes all the inspectional services, Board of Health, and the Concom. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of documentation, printing, needs of that sort, so the decision was made to go into contract for a, a machine for that floor, and to increase customer service, obviously, and efficiencies within the department, and this is now recognizing that additional cost. Town-owned buildings, we reduced that by two hundred dollars to reflect a more accurate estimate of what those costs for utilities in that building would be. The peg cable advisory is level funded across the board.
Everything else is level funded. Everything else is level funded.
Yeah, so Sealer Waits and Measures, which is on page ten.
Weren't there some, hold on, weren't there some other things for the peg, what about the, the contract book? What's going on? Is that in a different budget? It's in the special budget or something?
Brad Sweets is in there, Brad Sweets on there?
Not Brad Sweets, I'm talking about...
The cable advisory committee?
Yeah, the advisory committee having an attorney to help them out or something like that?
I think it's in there under legal, it's under the PET cable under legal.
Okay. Thank you.
What page is that on?
No, that's on page four, page.
Peg was on there.
Oh, it is, okay.
In the budget for that, it's all an offset from the, from the reserve for appropriation for the PET cable. So that comes in, it's not actually raised and appropriated, it shows up in the budget, but we, we then take that money from the reserve for appropriation fund, put it into the budget.
So Peg sends Sealer Waits and Measures, the stipend associated with that, level funded, no increase in that stipend. Animal control officer, the same, animal inspector, the same, tree warden, the same.
Wasn't there...
Tree warden or something?
Oh, I'm sorry, the salary on that, there is, this is on the tree warden. So actual expenditures associated with tree warden, the removal of trees, storms, etc., trees that are, that need to be removed, that the tree warden identifies as needing, be such. The budget is called for seven thousand seventy-five dollars historically. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, it was significantly higher, it was nineteen thousand five hundred, and in fiscal nineteen, it was fifteen thousand six twenty-five. So in this instance, that requested, that request is for an additional two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, which we got to ten thousand dollars in that line item. It varies year to year significantly, there's no doubt about that. But there's, there's historicals that show that it can vary significantly in, you know, more expensive for the town manor, so...
Are there some problem areas that they're anticipating that this will go back up? Because it looks like it's low this year, that...
Yeah, so nothing that was identified specifically saying that, you know, this, this area of trees are part of the, you know, they're problematic, but, you know, microbursts pop up, and you can have, when one fell swoop, ten thousand dollars like that.
This is another account that tends to be more seasonal, after the winter.
Can I offer a thought on this? Sort of perhaps, we still have this budget, that we have a warrant article to deal with this tree stuff. I think that the, one of the reasons we may have this additional cost, maybe because of microbursts and that, but it may also be because we've been allowing, because we didn't have the money, careful with the budget, but we've been allowing some trees that are kind of asking for it to continue until they come down and we don't want them to come down. I think that's something to be looked at, and perhaps it's a matter of remediation. Let's, let's see what we can do to get some trees down. I had made a proposal two, three years ago, and our goal of going after maybe fifty thousand dollars and trying to clean up the town, a purpose of which is public safety in my mind, where we want to keep the power going, because there are just a number of trees in a way that get into trouble. But in general, think about potentially, and we paid by free cash, I guess, as a warrant article, it's part of capital, it's not actual capital, but I mean, it's in part of that, that amount of money to see if we can improve the quality of the town's trees. We're not trying to improve the quality, we're trying to remove more of the dangerous trees.
Public safety.
That's it, next.
And then, again, miscellaneous supplies, etc., and dues and memberships of thirty-five dollars is for the increase in the membership for the, for the tree warden as well. We go to page thirteen, we have the trash expense, the roach collection, we have a contract with JRM, which we are in year eight, or we're going into year eight, I should say.
Yep.
We had first five-year term of four hundred and five thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars, and the final five years of this ten-year contract is four hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That fixed, that second half, obviously, like I mentioned, is a fixed cost for this, for this period. No increases until we go into negotiations for a new contract. So that's a, that's a contractual, contractual cost associated with that. The recycling expenditure, level funded as well. We turn to page sixteen, we'll hit the veterans.
We're thinking about it, it has this waste collection, which is this outsourcing once a year, once a year, that we do at Masco, so we've already paid our year, so this year is thirty-five hundred dollars, yeah.
Veteran services, level funded. Soldier, soldier engravings, the same. Page seventeen, historical commission, skip the library, go to the historical commission, again, same, level funded.